Where we'll be back, Dr. Where we're like leaning on the orthopedic surgeon. But now.
Seven oh one will call the meeting to order. Mr. Miller, would you please give us the plating legends?
Plating to the high of the United States of America and to the Republican Party. One nation under God, indivisible, with a vision of the strong.
Mrs. Sharp is absent, all our board members present. Mr. Board has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
All right, on to shout outs to celebrations.
All right, so this is an opportunity for folks to step up to the podium and give a shout out or recognition to someone. We'd ask that you please fill out the gold sheet and turn it into Ms. Coleman, and then we'll call your name up here. So first we have Ryan Lemke.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Lemke. I'd like to shout somebody out that's not necessarily doesn't work or go to school in the high school building, but district wide. This person is often behind the camera, but does a phenomenal job of what she does. That person's Carrie Stoltz. She's our Director of Marketing and Communications. She does an amazing job highlighting our students and staff in our buildings, as well as informing public of what's going on, and just been has been a tremendous addition to our district, and we love working with her. So it's been a blast to hear about some of the things that she's doing and seeing some of the things that she's doing, so she's doing an awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemke, and thank you, Ms. Stoltz. Next up, Liz Perkins.
Good evening. I'm Liz Perkins. I want to give a shout out to John Sharp. John is a pair professional here at the Richland Center High School. He often greets students every day. He arrives early, gets to the door, opens the door for students and staff, greets them, says hello. He knows students by name that he doesn't even directly work with, so he just takes that initiative to get to know them. You'll often see him going around table to table when he has lunch supervision and just talking with students and checking in on him. One of my favorite things about him is he often checks in on Mr. Lemke and I, just to kind of give us some life advice from lessons that he's had from, you know, days in his previous career, and just to check in on us too and guide us with our decisions. So I'm so thankful that John Sharp picked Richland Center High School to work. I hope he stays with us for a very long time.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Sharp. Next up, we have Ashlyn Coleman.
Good evening. I'm here to shout out Ms. Kim Oz. She is a substitute aide in my classroom this year. She's filling in for Sarah Gander, who's on maternity leave right now. And Ms. Kim goes above and beyond what's expected of her. She comes in and supports our student, but not only does she support that student who loves her very much, but she goes and helps the kids around her. Ms. Oz has been welcomed so much from our students in my second grade classroom. She makes everyone's day a little bit brighter. She comes in with a friendly smile, warm hugs, and helpful hands. Her daily presence is going to be missed in our classroom very much, and so I just want to say thank you to Ms. Kim for making a positive impact on our student experience. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Oz. Ms. Coleman, do you have any other questions for the evening? Okay, thank you. Everyone, we're shouting out and getting shouted out. I appreciate that. We appreciate that.
All right, on to public comments. For policy zero one six seven point three, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the school or parish or school district, the parent or the guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must be physically present at the meeting and must register in advance until a time allotted of thirty minutes will be given for public comment. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the order. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, using inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person or subject of particular remarks. Please see policy zero one six seven point three. For complete listing requirements or restrictions, if a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to other comments. Ms. Coleman?
Very soon.
Okay. On to reports, the district administrator report.
Okay, I have just a handful of announcements. One, I continue to get comments from folks in the public, not extremely often, but often enough that I think I should let you know about it, to remind the board members to use their microphones when they're talking. It may be easier to just turn it on when, so it's always on, and turn it off if you have to cough or sneeze, or it may be easier to just turn it on when it's your time to speak, but it does get brought up from time to time, so I know it's something that folks are watching either live or on delay. Secondly, we have elections. Our state has elections coming up here in November, and I thought this would be a good time to remind our board of our board member elections that will be coming up in April of 2026. We've got election Tuesday, I believe it's the seventh of April. We have two members who their term is up. Mr. Dowdna represents an at-large seat, and Mr. Bailey represents a City of Richland Center seat. So those two seats are up. Providing some more information as far as declaration of candidacy and what other folks need to do in the district office, that will be available sometime in mid-November, but just getting this out there. And then we also have two appointed positions, Ms. Sharp and Ms. Thompson, who are in the middle of a term, but by state statutes, when that next election cycle comes up, they have to rerun for that seat, and that position will then carry out the term. So Ms. Sharp represents an at-large position, and Ms. Thompson represents Area One East. So again, very early in the process, it's still October, but just putting that out there so that you folks know that you will be up for election in April, and I'll get you some more information as we get closer. Then some calendar dates for the board and the public to be aware of. Friday is an early release. Friday, it's the end of quarter one. This is different than a early release Wednesday, all right? PLC Wednesdays typically a one-hour early release. This Friday, we have a couple of those on our calendar, is a two-hour early release. So our primary school will dismiss at 1:05, our intermediate school at 1:20, and our high school at 1:30. Again, that is this Friday, October 31st, for the end of quarter one. And then finally, two other upcoming meetings or meeting dates that the board should be aware of. One, we will have a referendum projects ad hoc committee meeting on Tuesday, November 4th at 6:00 p.m. And those members were members that were formerly on the Buildings, Property, and Transportation Committee, so again, Tuesday, November 6th at 6:00 p.m. We'll do that here in the high school IMC, starting at 6:00 p.m. And then the following night, Wednesday, November 5th, we'll have our regular scheduled policy governance meeting, and that will be at seven o'clock here in the IMC for all our members. Those are the updates that I have for the board. Does anyone have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
The RCIS report.
Okay, this was an agenda item that was on at the last meeting, but we had some technical difficulties, and so the video itself didn't actually look accessible until late in the day at our last board meeting. So we put it on again for tonight. Hopefully, board members have gotten an opportunity to listen to Mr. Armijo, our intermediate school principal, speak on the happenings that are going on at the intermediate school. Generally speaking, he talked about some construction updates, mentioned that we're servicing 285 students at the intermediate school. They just got done with some state testing, and then a shout out to the staff. But if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to try to answer them or get you answers for Mr. Armijo, but hopefully you got a chance to watch that video that has been uploaded. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, on to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes, October 8th, 2025? Motion made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Miller, discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 On to financial items, approval of statement of cash and invoices.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the statement of cash dated October 29th, 2025, approved through First Bank General Checking Account, checks number eight seven five six zero through eight seven six seven six, ACH number two five two six zero three eight one one through two five two six zero three eight six eight, DFT number two zero two five zero 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 eight zero through two zero two five zero zero nine one, minus voided checks in the amount of $3,646.66, for a net total of $214,525.76. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion is made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, invited by Mr. Oxwell. Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to point out or add?
Nothing to add tonight.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Dowdna?
Aye.
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 On to seven B, presentation, how assessed values affect property taxes.
Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Bosworth, while he's getting things loaded up. The next three topics will actually be turned over to Mr. Bosworth, so he can introduce the next two after they're announced, but with the city having gone through reassessments recently, and other townships may have recently done the same, we felt it would be very important to share with the board and the public in general really what that means for the property taxes. So as board members, if you get questioned, you can either answer the question or reference this core meeting, or obviously get them in touch with myself and Mr. Bosworth. But just a quick, high-level overview of how those two things are related and what this means for stakeholders. Come on, Mr. Bosworth, if you're ready.
You're welcome. Thank you. Property taxes are hard to think about. One of the things that's hard is that we only really think about them once a year when we get a tax bill or when we get a reassessment. It's really the only two times over a year people really think about property taxes, so anything that we may tell them often kind of goes by the wayside until the next year comes around and people think about property taxes again. And they're not real intuitive. It's a pretty good system that exists, but it's not real intuitive, and it's not easy to understand. So hopefully, what we show you tonight will give you a little bit of information to help try to explain things if possible. So we're going to use a real simple hypothetical example, an imaginary city, imaginary numbers, real small, real simple numbers to try to drive home a couple of points, okay? So in this hypothetical example, we're going to say that the revenue limit for this hypothetical school district is $30,000. So the revenue limit is the maximum dollar value that that school district can collect, And then this school district is going to be able to use two sources to bring in those revenues. They're going to get some of the money from the state, and they're going to get some of the money from property taxes. They'll get $20,000 from the state, which means that the remaining $10,000 would need to come from the taxpayers. So the school district will get $30,000 total, 20 would come from the state, 10 then would be would have to be paid by the taxpayers. And so in this hypothetical situation, we have two municipalities that are in this school district. One is called the Village of Excellence, and one is called the Township of Greatness. Two townships, two municipalities only. We happen to have many municipalities. This hypothetical example only uses two. And there are two things to keep separate in your mind, equalized value and assessed value. Equalized value is set by the state, by the Department of Revenue. It does not matter what local assessors have said or not said about a property. The Department of Revenue looks at the whole district as a whole, and they have their measurement tools, and they say, we think that this municipality has X value of property in it, and we think this municipality has Y value of property in it. And it doesn't matter what local assessors have said. The state watches that on a year-to-year basis, and those numbers are pretty accurate. The opposite of that is the assessed value. That's the local assessments that our surveyors have done for us that is not come into play determining tax levies. These two municipalities, the Village of Excellence, the state has said, we believe you have a total value of all your homes of 5.4 million, and the Township of Greatness, the state has said, we believe you have a total value of all your homes of $600,000. So two municipalities, Department of Revenue said, we think you're 5.4 million, we think you're .6 million. Why are those numbers important? Because that's how we're going to figure out how much each municipality has to pay. Total school district has to pay $10,000. How much does the Village of Excellence have to pay? How much does the Township of Greatness have to pay? That's determined by equalized values and the percentage. So again, if we think about these two, equalized value of 5.4, $600,000, and you do some math, you can see that 90% of all the value of the whole district is in the Village of Excellence. 10% of all the value of the whole district is in the Township of Greatness. That's the percentage of the levy that they're going to pay. The township is going to pay that money. Total levy of the taxpayers are on the hook is $10,000. Village of Excellence would pay 90% of that, Township of Greatness would pay 10% of that. In our simple math, it's $9,000, that's $1,000. We're going to focus now on the Township of Greatness. They have 10% of the total value, they have to pay 10% of the levy, $1,000. Their whole township is on the hook to pay $1,000. Township of Greatness happens to have two homes in it. Each of those homes is currently assessed at $150,000. So those two homes have to pay $1,000. How would we figure out how much each one of those is going to pay? Again, it's a percentage. Both of those homes represent 50% of the value, so they'd be they'd both be on the hook for 50% of that tax rate, $500 each. Total of $1,000 of the Township of Greatness needed to pay. Occasionally, some people will make improvements to their homes. So we went from a simple home to, we added a garage there, we've improved our home, we've improved our situation. When the assessor comes through and they see those improvements, they're going to give new home values. Take a step back, remember that our original equalized value for Village of Excellence was 5.4, the total assessed was 5.4 also. So in other words, the Village of Excellence had probably had a very recent assessment, because the assessed values and the equalized values are the same. The Township of Greatness may not have had their property assessed for a number of years. They potentially, hypothetically, the Township of Greatness just had a new assessment, and now their assessed value has risen to what the state has said it was all along. The new assessed values inside of the Township of Greatness, remember, they were both originally $150,000? So that home that did nothing to it, did no improvements, that has risen in value, you know, through inflation, it's now worth $250,000. The home that did some improvements is now worth $350,000, that's its assessed value. These two homes are still on the hook to pay $1,000 for the Township of Greatness. Because they've been reassessed, and because their values have shifted, the percentage has shifted, the amount of that $1,000 now may also shift. Before, both homes were assessed equally, and they both paid $500. Now that one is assessed greater, they're going to pay a bigger share. They're going to pay their fair share, but it's probably going to be bigger. So now if you do the math, that original home that had no improvements is now 42% of the value of that whole township. The one that added the garage is now 58%. So the home that added the garage now has to pay a property tax bill of 583. It went up, 500 to 583. Actually, the other home, hypothetically, went down from 500 to $417. Again, keeping the same $1,000. So, simple hypothetical, two municipalities, a couple homes inside of Township of Greatness. Any questions about that general process? How we determine which how much each municipality pays? And how we determine how much each home pays inside of that municipality? Any questions there? Okay? Like I said, every time people get an assessment, it can be a stressful situation. A couple of years ago, I think it was the Township of Richland, now maybe most recently it's the City of Richland Center, had some reassessments. People get those things, and they think, my gosh, my home went from 170 to 350, my value just doubled. Am I now going to pay double the taxes? Right? And people budget for their taxes, they put a money away each month, and they get stressed, I'm not going to have enough money when the tax bill comes around, because I'm going to have to pay double. And that's kind of what we're trying to help understand tonight, is that's not likely to happen. It's not likely that because a home has now been reassessed after a number of years, an increase in value possibly even doubled, that their property taxes are also going to double. That's not likely. Okay? Any questions about that process? I'm going to show you some actual school district numbers here in a second, but any questions about how that simple math works? Okay? So this, and I'm not sure if this was actually on the PDF that went in yours in your booklet or not, but these are some real numbers. Zoom in here a little bit, and then I'll zoom back out. So this, this is from last year. Last year, all the way in the bite, our total levy last year was just a little bit over $10 million. That's how much we collected from our taxpayers. The bottom of the second column is the total property value, right? That's what the state determined. The state last year said, Richland School District, you have $1.145 billion worth of property across the whole school district. And you can see, those are all of the different municipalities. City of Richland, 409 million. Town of Eagle, 14 million. Town of Richwood, 939,000. Town of Willow, 560,000. So those numbers are divided by the total, and the City of Richland has 35, had 35.76% of all the property value in the whole district. So the City of Richland has to pay 35.76% of the levy, which last year worked out to be just under $3.6 million. And Town of Richwood last year had .08%, so they have to pay .08% of the total levy, which last year was a little over $8,000. However many property homes are in the Town of Richwood, the $8,000 bill is divided amongst all of them. They all pay their fair share, not their equal share, their fair share based on their home values. So this was last year's. Here is this year's, which we'll talk about a little bit more in detail here coming up. But now, so the bottom right here, the total levy this year is $10,417,000. So it was a little bit over $10 million last year, it's risen by about $300,000. So it's a big number, but at the same time, it's pretty close to what it was last year. So people's taxes should be pretty close to what they were last year. But if we take a look at Richland, probably want to go back and forth here, maybe. If you remember last year, Richland had 35.7% of the property value. This year, Richland has 30, City of Richland has 37.7% of the total property value. That could be some new constructions, probably due to new construction, potentially. So now this year, the City of Richland needs to pay 37.7% of the total levy, which this year works out to be about 3.8. So last year, the City of Richland paid just under $3.6 million total, the city did. This year, they will pay just under $3.9 million. So the entire city has an increase of about $300,000 in taxes. So $300,000 are going to be divided amongst all of the people who live in the City of Richland, and they'll all pay their fair share, not their equal share, their fair share based on their home values. So if everybody's, if a lot of people's property assessments nearly doubled, and they're concerned, are my property taxes going to double? If that was truly the case, whereas last year, the City of Richland paid 3.6 million, if everybody's property taxes doubled, we would expect the City of Richland to pay about $7 million in taxes. They're not going to pay that. They're going to pay about 3.9 million in taxes. Now again, could somebody have upgraded their home? Put the new garage on? Are you going to pay a little bit more now? Yeah, you probably will, because now your property's worth a little bit more, and your neighbor that did nothing may, relatively speaking, pay a little bit less. But the city as a whole still basically has the same percentage of value of the whole district, and they're still paying about the same levy amount. And of course, then you can look at all the rest of these. This table is kind of a heat chart, so to speak. Some of these things actually went down. Town Dayton's property value actually decreased. You may see their property tax bills actually stay the same or go down. So everything's a little bit different, but the total levy is very similar to what it was last year. So we would expect people's taxes when the tax bill's come in December to be close to what they were last year. Any questions that we can try to answer? Okay? I need to give credit to Mr. Board for coming up with those awesome graphics that you saw on the PowerPoint. That was, that was his skills on full display right there. All right.
Thank you.
So then, I think we will roll right into talking about the budget. And then we will, and then we'll approve this budget, and then the next thing will be to amend the levy that was passed at the annual meeting. It's very close, but we have to do an amendment to that. So let me first start by showing, I know I've showed one of these things in the past, and I know it's kind of difficult to see, but this is a spreadsheet that is produced by the Department of Public Instruction, and it's a lot like doing your taxes, and most of the numbers are pre-filled for us. One of the main drivers in figuring out your revenue limit is your student enrollment. So generally speaking, student enrollment goes up, your revenue limit goes up. Your revenue limit is then total amount of money you can collect, and then, you know, how much do you get from the state, and how much do you get from your property taxpayers? This is last year, so that $10,035,000 value that we were just looking at, that's down here in the lower corner. here in the lower, lower corner. A couple of other things I want to point out. This value right here, the private school, we've talked about that in the past, we'll talk about it again. Last year, we collected a little over $900,000 to pay for private vouchers that go to private school students that are in this district. That is not money that is subtracted from the public school district, but it is money that is collected from taxpayers. It's additional money. We have our own revenue limit that we're allowed to collect, and the private school voucher is, is collected on top of that. But again, from, from our taxpayers. Last year, our total aid that we got from the state was about 11.4 million. About 11.4 last year. Our total revenue limit was about 7.7 million. And that's it, that's 7.7 million. That's all that we're allowed to collect. We can't say, you know, I want to buy, I want to get coach buses for all of our kids and raise the levy. Well, we could get coach buses, but we got to, we got to do it out of this 7.7 million. We can't raise more money just to pay for coach buses. The only way that we, that this school board is allowed to collect more money is for, to pay off debt. And, and we've done that the last few years. We've done some defeasance, and now that we have some referendums, we're collecting to pay debt payments on the referendums. And last year, we collected about 2.2 million, and those were used for debt payments. Just so that you understand this, you know, if the school board wanted, you could put $10 million in that box. In theory, you could. Of course, you know, would that make your debt go away faster? Absolutely it would. And would it reduce the amount of interest paid in the long run? 100% it would. But then, of course, you have to think about what's the, you know, how much can taxpayers' stomach? Can they, can they stand an extra $10 million in taxes? It's a great idea, but how much can taxpayers really handle? And that's one of the tough things to think through every year. Okay, so then last year, our mill rate was about 8.76. So that's last year's revenue limit worksheet. Let me try to compare this year's. Point out some of the same things. Sheesh, that is not as big. Let's try that. Okay? So, here's the, here's the student value. It's actually a little bit less than last year, but as Mr. Board has mentioned two or three times now, it's not as small as we thought it was going to be. So it is a win. Right? Demographically, we're shrinking, but yet we're not shrinking. It's fast. That's really good. Notice that the private school voucher payment has increased. Was last year was about 900,000, now it's, it's a little over 900,000, now it's just a little bit under 1.2 million. So that's just additional money that our taxpayers need to provide for us. The total amount that we're allowed to collect is a little bit more this year. Last year was 7.7, now it's 8.1 million dollars. Notice the amount that we're levying for debt payments. Last year was 2.2, this year it's just under 2.2, so almost exactly the same, just maybe just a little bit less. In a second, we'll talk about, we're actually going to use some of our existing money right now in fund balance to pay down some debt, so we don't have to collect quite as much. And then, the mill rate, last year was about 8.6, this year, it's kind of hard to see that, but about 8.4. So mill rate decreased just a little bit, relative number, but it did decrease. Okay. That, we don't want to read about Russia. So any questions on the revenue limit? The revenue limit is, it's, there's not a lot of leeway there. The only leeway really is, you know, to add more money to collect for debt service, or potentially to not levy to the max. And that is technically an option. Most school districts don't do that. Even though, increasing revenue limit is, is great, it's a positive, it brings more money for schools, but the downside to that is if there's no new construction in your community, that basically means that the taxpayers are going to pay more for the increased revenue limit. A lot of times when, when the total property value raises, last year was 1.4 billion, this year it's 1.2, or 1.14 billion, this year it's 1.24 billion. So that, that went up, but a lot of that is probably due to inflation. Some new construction, but, but not a lot. So that means that most of the increased revenue that we're going to bring in is going to, is going to come from the same existing taxpayers paying a little bit more. Okay. Any questions about the revenue and worksheets? Move on, and let's talk a little bit about our, our local budget document. This is a document that we use here because the document, I'm going to show you after this, is not quite as easy to understand. It's, it's in the format that the DPI needs it to be to collect it, but it's, it's not real intuitive to look at. So we use this, this document. This document is not official. Okay? The, the next one we're going to look at that's official, that's pulled right from Skyward, those numbers are exact, they should be. If there isn't, there's a computer issue. These numbers are transferred by eyes and hands into, into boxes, and so there are potentially errors here, but I want to point out a few things. So we're looking at this year's proposed budget, last year's unaudited, actual numbers, unaudited, not official yet, not at all. And then 23, 24, actual numbers. Those, those are in the books. So I want to point out that the equalization aid actually decreased. We're going to get a little bit less from the state this year. Whether it goes up or down each year is kind of hard to predict. I did read that almost two-thirds of the school districts this year are going to receive a little bit less state aid than they received last year. Talking about 11 million dollars, you know, 300,000, 250,000 is not a large number relatively speaking, but it is still a large number. So that's going to go down. Line 15, sorry, that was line seven before. Line 15, the general fund tax levy, that's going up. I think I showed you those two before, that's the revenue limit worksheet, calculated those numbers for us. The tax levy is, is increasing now. Line 22, open enrollment, this is the number that, that we are told to use. Last year, we collected about $840,000. This year, we believe we're going to collect about $870,000 for open enrollment. That's a positive. Mr. Board has talked about those numbers before. Couple of other things to mention, into some revenues here, line 34 and 37, we have some smaller grants that, that kind of come and go, and sometimes they phase out, so you know, a couple of things like an AODA grant or homeless grant, those, those may be ending, so we don't, we're not going to have those anymore. Grants are very specific in purpose, and what you can use them for, and you can't spend more than you get. So it is, it's not a loss generally to the overall operation of the building, but it is going to stop. A couple of those smaller ones are going to stop. And then down on the bottom, I point out our total revenues, really close to what they were last year. Really, really close, not a big, not a big jump. Continue on then, to the second page, a couple of other things to point out. On page 53, our district-wide budget jumped somewhat considerably, 1.2 million to 1.4 million. Inside of that specific budget is the private school payment, which I showed you before, jumped from 900,000 to 1.2 million. And that always lags a year behind, right, Mr. Board? So, you know, we're paying for what last year's numbers were. We know, we have done some considerable work with some of our new programs to, to try to entice maybe some private or homeschool students to come into our district and have had some success. We wouldn't be able to see those numbers till at least one year. So it lags behind a year. Line 55, the open enrollment out expense has decreased. That is a positive. Any decrease is good, right? Especially in that, in that arena. Line 66, structural salaries and benefits, quite a big jump here. And this is probably the reason for, the main reason for the projected deficit, which I'm going to show you in a little bit. Insurance costs increased, and we are adding positions. We've added new Hive positions, and we've added a new iThrive position. So inside of that increase is at least three full-time positions, as well as some insurance And then also to point out, Richland Online Academy, the budget for that, right, last year was 28, this year it's 185, right? Our numbers are exploding inside of there, which is great, but you have to buy stuff. You gotta, and even is, even though it's a digital program, you got to buy access to stuff. So that, that's why that has increased so much. And I'm going to continue on to the last page, point on a couple more things. Line 100, iThrive tuition, this did not exist anymore, excuse me, didn't exist before, it does exist now, we're predicting about 285,000 would come into our district from, from neighboring schools that are, they're sending their students here. On line 111, I'd point out, here's another increase, sizable increase in our special ed salaries, and that's mainly, that's mainly from the bulk of the iThrive staffing. Most of the iThrive staffing is reported inside of this line item, special ed salaries. That, that is the reason for that increase. So, you consider those things, revenue's gone up a little bit, equalized aid's gone down a little bit. The staffing changes, insurance changes, the Hive budget. And then one other thing I didn't, I mentioned before, I want to mention again, we're going to spend about $230,000 on debt payments that we're not levying for this year. It's currently sitting in fund balance, it's called bond premium. The folks at Baird helped us collect that money, and it's sitting in fund balance, and we're going to use that. So technically, that's going to spend down the fund balance a little bit. We're not collecting that revenue, but we're going to spend it. So you add all those things up, and we're showing a deficit of about $500,000. The last time I was able to speak to board members about the budget and the deficit that we've been looking at, you know, for a while, and the question was, well, you know, should we, should we try to make some cuts in other areas to present the balanced budget, or should we show this? And the sentiment at the time was, no, don't make the cuts right now. Let's show this, and let's explain where most of this deficit is coming from, from the new addition of staff and/or the new program budget, combined with the planned spend down for debt payments. So, that's, that's where that deficit comes from. We've talked about this a number of times, the hope is that these new programs will continue to draw students, and as you've seen in the revenue limit worksheet, more students leads to more revenue in the long run. It doesn't typically go the next year, but it, but it does get there. Okay. That's the unofficial local budget document that's maybe a little bit easier to understand. Is there any questions in here that I could answer? Okay, if there's no questions there, then we're going to look at the official budget document. So, so when Mr. John Bahad asks for a motion to approve a budget, this is the actual budget that we're, that we're approving, which is very similar to this, but again, this is unofficial, this is official. We've already reviewed this at the annual meeting, it hasn't changed, it changed just slightly, because the equalized value, the equalized aid, those shifted just slightly. Since the last time we talked, our levy actually went down a little bit from the last time we talked. The only thing I'll point out in this document that changed from the last time we met at the annual meeting was line 187. At that time, we were showing that food service was running a deficit, and so we were projecting a deficit moving into the next fiscal year as well. But we've since realized that was just an accounting issue. We had some revenues that we had not accounted for. Once we accounted for those revenues, now we're showing that food service will probably end, this probably ended 24, 25 with a surplus, and so we're projecting that same sort of pattern going into 25, 26. And this, this looks different, it's just set up by fund, rather than we're, we're used to look at specific budgets for iThrive and Hive and things like that. This is all set up by Fund 10, Fund 10, Fund 27, Fund 50, et cetera. If there's any questions I can answer, and if there isn't, I think probably I would suggest you try to make a motion and pass that budget.
Any questions? Where are those? There's none, there's a motion to approve, motion to adopt the 2025, 26 budget as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Dowd, is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's track some discussion. Mr. Board?
Aye.
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 Now on to 7D, amend resolution to vote a tax for the operation of the Richland School District for 2025, 26.
Mr. Posner, time to be ready now.
Yeah, so at the annual meeting, a resolution was passed, which, which talked about how much general fund, how much Fund 80, how much Fund 38 was going to be collected. Those numbers have shifted just slightly. This pie chart helps understand where the money in the tax levy goes. So in the money that's going to be collected from the taxpayers, where is it, where's it going? Well, 120,000 is, goes to Fund 80, that's used for things like the police liaison officer, safer routes to school, and the sidewalk that's being discussed between the city and the school. The Fund 39 debt, that's used to pay off our referendum debts. Fund 38 debt is used to pay off some of our debts, not related to referendum, related to some unfunded liabilities from a few years ago. Private school voucher payment that I mentioned is inside of this levy, and then of course, the Fund 10 operations, those are the main operations. And this is just the levy, remember that we were getting, you know, a little over 11 million dollars from the state as well, and they send us payments for that every few months. This is the act, this is the chunk that we have to collect from our taxpayers, the amount that's a little bit over 10 million. And then each municipality pays their fair share, and then each, each home or land pays their fair share inside of that municipality. But this, these are the numbers that are included in that motion to amend the resolution.
Any questions for board members? Is there a motion to amend the resolution to vote a tax for the operation of the Richland School District for 2025, 26, in a total amount of $10,417,771, of which $183,445 is for debt within the revenue limit, $2,193,041 is for debt outside of the revenue limit, and $120,000 is for community service expenses. So, the motion made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion? Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
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 Mrs. Coleman, consent agenda items?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items is accepted. Motion to accept the donation of snacks valued at approximately $400 from the UCCU. Motion to accept the donation of snacks valued at approximately $400 from the UCCU. Motion to accept the donation of soccer balls valued at approximately $100 from the Richland Center Callers. Motion to waive policy 5851, school events on Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays to allow the Skills USA Club to attend the Fall Leadership Conference on November 16 and 17, 2025 as presented. Motion to ratify one open enrollment in application, which has already been granted approval by the district administrator, and to approve one open enrollment out of application for the 2025-26 school year as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Troxell, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Thompson, discussion? Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 On behalf of the board, I would like to thank WCCU, the Richland Center Callers for the donations. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda? Motion made by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Aye.
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 Information and discussion items, district vacancies and appointments?
Okay, you can see that we have three vacancies after much of the shuffling that was going on with the custodial department, we had some internal transfers. When it was all said and done, we ended up with two positions that are still open, we've now posted for those, night custodial positions, that was posting, and one just ended, and one will be, actually, they're both supposed to be 10:30, they're both ending. And then the other is the Drug Free Communities Project Coordinator, I had shared with you at our last board meeting on October 8th, I believe it was, that I would be coming to you with a plan for that. I've been working with Mr. Isler, our Drug Free Community Project Coordinator, on this, and she is still examining a couple of different options for this. She asked if we could push it off for two more weeks and bring a resolution to November 12th, and I certainly said that we would want to explore all options, so we would do that, and I would share that with the board. So we'll be bringing that back to you, it is technically still posted right now, but I hope to have more information on the 12th, and hopefully some of her ideas come into fruition. Do we have any questions on our vacancies and appointments? Thank you.
Notification to waiving policy 1551, school events on Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays?
Okay, so this was one of the events that, the turnaround was very quick, in fact, right after our last board meeting on the 8th, the very next day on that Thursday, one of our clubs had heard about some of our other clubs doing some parking and cleanup at the, what was it, the Hub City Drag Race, not Drag Race, what was it?
Derby Race.
Okay, that, thank you. I thought I had it in here, I didn't see it. Regardless, that event, or one of the spots that they still had open was for parking and cleanup on Sunday, and so a quick turnaround, again, they needed approval for that because it was on a Sunday. I granted that approval, just like the other events that were going on Friday and Saturday, but as our board policy says, when that approval is granted, I need to notify the board, that's what I'm doing here. The board has given me the approval, the ability to grant up to 12 of these, this is the third one that I've done in this fashion. So I'll continue to keep tally marks of only I've used, and I certainly will always notify the board when those are used. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you.
And the awards, snowplowing bid for 2025-26?
Okay, the original timeline that the board looked at said that tonight would be the night that the bids are brought back to the board for approval. We had two bids that were submitted, and there was quite a discrepancy in the bids that were quoted, and so with that, we want to do our due diligence to make sure that the contractors understood the full scope, that they have the ability to fulfill, and then of course, we want to do our reference checks and things like that. So we will hope that there's not going to need to be any snowplowing between now and November 12th. If they are, we'll be operating under our old contract, but we'll bring bits back for the board to formally approve on November 12th. Any questions on that process or timeline? Okay, thank you.
Right, action items, revisions to the 2025-26 school calendar.
I think all the pertinent information is in your memo, these are technically a little bit more than technical changes, there are true revisions to dismissal times. When the board approved the calendars, we had start and dismissal times based on the information that we had at that time, but as our referendum projects have gotten completed and we're able to get all of our buses at one location at the end of the school day, we had to make just a few tweaks. Primary school got pushed back five minutes, for example, and so the, because the regular dismissal times changed, as a result, our one-hour and two-hour early dismissal times changed. That's what's in salmon, and that's what's in the light blue in your memo, and we just want our calendar to reflect actual board action, and so we're asking the board to make those revisions to the 25-26 school calendar. Once we know exactly what 26-27 looks like, we'll ask for revision of that as well, but at this point, it is just for 25-26. Minimal changes, but they are changes. Any questions on that?
Do these changes affect the weather days of quality speech?
The built-in weather days are listed at the bottom of that memo, they would have shifted just ever so slightly, maybe we're talking five minutes under the issue, so very, very low. Anything to add on that, Mr. Bosworth?
No, so that box there includes the accurate built-in weather days, so we've punched in new numbers into the spreadsheet, and those are the adjusted.
Question?
We'll be looking for a motion to revise the 25-26 calendar.
Any questions from board? Is there a motion to approve the revisions to the 2025-26 school calendar as presented? Motion made by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Thompson, discussion? Mr. Miller?
Aye.
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 Aye. 11B, waive components of policy 8510, wellness?
Okay, so our wellness policy, policy 8510, you'll see the full policy there in the PDF, and then excerpts are there in the memo. Due to the recent DPI food service audit that we had, we really looked at our wellness policy as part of that audit, and then coupled that with the things that we were just talking about, some slight changes in busing before school and after school as we've got just slightly new times. Some of the things that are in the wellness policy are not 100% in compliance. For instance, we may not quite have 20 minutes for breakfast in the morning, it may be like 17, just because of the bus routes and the way school is being started. Our alternative schools that are new are not necessarily part of the USDA nutritional guidelines, okay? That's something that our policy says. So we're asking that the board, for the 25-26 school year, waive these components of policy 8510, again, they're listed there, and kind of the reason why we're looking to do that, to give our wellness committee an opportunity to examine the policy itself, also for administration to start looking at what does 26-27 look like for start times, ending times, recess schedules, lunch schedules, things like that, so that we can put them all together and make sure that for next year, they're all aligned. But instead of trying to change starting and stop times from what our families are used to now for literally three or four minutes, in my opinion, it's much easier to waive the policy, to try to get as close as we can to it, but to not be a non-compliance of our own rules. Mr. Bosworth, anything to add that you want to point out regarding that? This would need board action.
Are we looking at waiving the entire policy, or just the components of policy that we're adopting?
Believe the latter, but let me confirm that with Mr. Bosworth, do we have everything that we need waived listed out here?
I believe there are a couple other components, since this was written, that had been identified. I don't know exactly what those are off the top of my head, so if you wanted to make a motion to grant it a little bit more leeway, that might be helpful. They've identified a couple other things as well. Or we just bring back another one, you know, and let's mean one of those specific things in it also, which is just as easy to do.
I'll bring it back. Any other questions from board? Is there anything that would create an issue with DPI? Would there be any issues with not having this policy in place, is it an internal, essentially audit?
DPI says we have to have a wellness policy, we have to be compliant on it, but we don't have to do these particular things that will be getting accurate.
So if we weigh down these pieces and do it all at one, does that create an issue with DPI? We can address that in two weeks.
If we postpone everything and just bring the whole thing back, I don't think that will create any issues, do you, Mr. Bosworth?
I don't think so. I'm okay with approving me and just bringing in a little additional, I just want to make sure that it's not going to create any issues with the district with DPI.
I think either is okay with us. If you're going to approve the ones that are written in the memo, I'm going to add the words "as presented" in the end of the motion, so that reflects what was presented in the memo. Obviously, if you're looking to just waive the entire policy, that's an option. If you're looking at bringing everything back, you can just table this to another postponed future, I think. I think we can live with any of those.
Do you just want to postpone the whole thing? I'm fine with that. Fine with that, or as presented, but bringing that thing. It's a dual choice.
Any issues with that, Mr. Jones?
Let's postpone this then, so we can do this in one action instead of multiple. Right. Approval of counteroffer terms for Richland County for campus property.
Okay, because there are a couple of images, I think, and I know the board all has access to it, but just for any viewers, I think I might just go to the podium and put them there. Okay, I want to make sure that we go on the record and open to explain the entire process to, of course, our board is familiar with it, but to our stakeholders on the timeline and what has happened with the campus property. And all the documents and the entire timelines here, I'm going to give a high-level overview, but anybody who's watching this now or in the future, I would encourage you, again, go to our board docs and get the full timeline, all of the documents are in there, but I'm just going to kind of put it on the verbal record and kind of talk through the entire timeline. So way back 21-22 school year, our 7th and 8th graders, we made the move to move our 7th and 8th graders up to this building, our high school building, and with that, that created an immediate need for an additional gymnasium space, okay? That happened to be right around the same time or shortly after that sting started, which transportation to the intermediate school was problematic. When sting started, it became nearly impossible, and so we started with an MOU with then UW Platteville-Richland for some space. Fast forward a couple of years to 2023, and this was when the district started to plan for referendum, okay? And we looked at several different options. One of those options included a $40 million building of adding on for gymnasium space and weight room space, because again, we identified this need. And through the course of that, of course, we ultimately ended up settling on the 27.16 million, and I don't want to speak for that board, but generally speaking, I believe that the consensus was, why would we ask our taxpayers to pay an additional $13 million when we literally have a gymnasium 200 yards away from our high school? And so again, we did not do that option, but instead, again, continued that MOU with the campus to provide a cost-effective alternative. July 1st, 2024, Platteville officially pulls out of the campus, and that space is now vacated. We no longer have an MOU in place, all right? We were unable to use the gymnasium for that time. We started the process at that time to reestablish an MOU with the county. That process finally got finalized, and actually, we started the process a little bit before July 1st of 2024 because we knew this was coming. That process finally got finalized this past summer, and now this year, we have an MOU and we are using it. Again, I'm just trying to emphasize that this is a space that we've desperately needed. This summer, July 28th, to be exact, our board met in closed session and approved and offered a purchase to the county for $1, and that offer of purchase is in the public documents down below, and what it included, I think visual is probably easier than trying to explain it, what it included was the property that is shaded in yellow, all right? So get your bearings here, this is coming in, new bridge that's built, this is a county road, coming in here, parking lot, the Melville Hall, which is the office spaces that are used, the gymnasium is right here, the green space to the north side of Melville Hall, not this parking lot, because we recognize that Simons still needed a parking lot, and then all of the green space basically from north of Brush Creek to south of what is a walking path right now, from Hive Drive to Simons. And that was given, our board acted on that, included those things. Why was it done enclosed, okay? State law allows for municipalities to go into closed to negotiate, all right? Because we had had zero communications with the county, we had no idea if the county was even open to selling property, all right? And we were fearful if we put in a public bid for $1, that opens up private people to put in a bid for more than that, that could put the county in a very compromising position. You've got a school district for a dollar, you've got, you know, Mr. Smith downtown that wants a gym for his grandkids, is willing to pay $60,000, what does the county do? That becomes very problematic for the county. So in an effort to try to enter negotiations, in an effort to try to protect our negotiating strategy, that was done enclosed, and it was delivered to the county in late July, in fact, it was hand-delivered to them. The county then discussed that proposal in closed sessions as well, one on August 14th, and then they sent it to a couple of their committees to discuss enclosed, the Campus Reconfiguration Committee, and the Executive and Finance Committee on August 20th and September 9th respectively. During that time, County Administrator Clementson and myself, we've had verbal communications, there was a deadline for them to act, but we also knew that they needed to, they wanted to jump through, go through some of these committees and get the feedback from their committees. And so with that, verbally, they had asked if we would consider some adjustments to our original proposal, and that is in the second image. And so those things that they wanted us to consider were, one, if you're going to take this property, would you take the area indicated in blue on the map, which is basically Brush Creek and south, all the way to Highway 14, all right? Seemed like a reasonable request, why would they want that little sliver of undevelopable land, developable land, when it can just go with the original property? With that, there is a sign right here indicated in the red circle, which is owned by- With that, there is a sign right here indicated in the red circle, which is owned by Simons and powered by Simons. If we took the blue area, then we would also need an easement to be able to allow, grant them access to continue to have the Simons sign there. We've confirmed that it's not powered off of any of the buildings that we're looking at, it is powered by the Simons building. And then, the third thing was that they wanted to have an easement that allowed for them to potentially build a road, I don't know if you can see where my arrows at here, this gray road on the north side of the property, to connect Hive Drive with the Simons parking lot, giving them the ability to have a second entrance, okay? In addition to having an easement around here to where they can get in through what would be proposed to be school property, all right? School board met on September 24th, and they had no issues with that, those proposals in concept, and then voted to extend the deadline to purchase to October 22nd. And so, that next day, the district sent a letter to County Administrator Clementson and the County Board Chair, Mr. Turk, indicating that the district had extended that offer to October 22nd. Again, that document is also in the public folder there. On October 10th, okay, when we realized that, the county said, we're going to be discussing this, we're going to first go into closed, then come out and to open and discuss this, Mr. Omni-Han and I, myself, we drafted a letter to make sure that it went to the county to be able to be put in the open board book to really explain the why. Why is the school district looking to do this? Why was the purchase for a dollar? Why did we go into closed to begin with? Again, that letter is also in the public documents. On that night that they had their board meeting, October 20th, the county board met, and they approved a conditional counter offer, okay? And that counter offer, and this is ultimately what the board, you're going to be asked to vote on here this evening, is very similar to the last option that you saw, but the counter offer is basically this, that the school district would purchase all of its in yellow, which again includes the area south of Brush Creek, they would purchase that for a purchase price of $1, that there would be easements developed where it's indicated in red, which would be for the Simons sign, as well as an easement around the pathway, which was kind of in the original offer, this map just outlines it a little clearer. And instead of doing an easement on the north side of the property, because the county already owns the property to the north, there's no reason for the school district to own another 40 feet only to grant an easement to it. So we've just scaled back our property line to the south by the width that we need to be able to get a road in there, and then the county can do that. They can put it on their land, they can maintain it as they intended to all along, and if they ever were to look at sell any of that property, then they could have an easement granted for the next property owner. But there's really no reason for us to do that. In addition, they have asked us to enter into an MOU with Simons. Basically, what we've had before with roles reversed, because now we would be the owner. Absolutely want to continue to work with Simons and continue to have a good partnership with not only Simons, but the county as a whole. And so, now, the county has acted on this in open. We have now told the full story in open as well, and so I am asking our board to look at acting, looking at approving the counter offer and the terms, which basically is an offer of purchase, this land here indicated in yellow for $1, with easements to be granted in the areas that are red. We would conduct the surveying, that would be our cost. However, I did talk to Administrator Clementson today, and she indicated that there may be an opportunity for some shared cost with surveying because they are looking at the potential of surveying and basically removing the Simons property from the rest of the county property. And so if we can get a surveyor out here, doing both of them at once, and it's an expense that we can share and save money on, that's a win-win for both. And then the last thing I should mention in the counter offer regarding Simons, we scaled back our property line just a little bit. You'll see this area just to the west of the Simons parking lot is no longer shaded in yellow. That is for Simons to have the potential to expand their parking lot in the future, should they see the need for that. So, again, we have no issue with that particular piece of property. So, that's really what we would be looking at doing. If the board approves this, then we would get an MOU drafted with Simons, we would get surveyors out here to start working on surveying costs and finalize those property boundaries consistent with what they're looking for, and then we would, you know, try to set a closing date for both parties. Any questions from the board? Either that they want on the record for the public to be aware of that I may have forgotten, or just general questions that you have been asked. One more thing, I guess maybe the why, right? I explained the gymnasium, and why the school's interested in the gymnasium. We have a need for gymnasium, and it is literally a couple hundred yards from our current property. Maintaining this property is relatively easy because it's adjacent to our current property. Why Melville Hall? Our, and you heard Mr. Bosworth say during the budget presentation, you've heard me say in previous presentations, our alternative schools are really doing well, okay? And we can expect this to continue to grow. Both I Thrive, Partner, our Hive, these programs are really something that we are finding a lot of people in our area, and even outside of the Richland School District boundaries, are finding a reason to come to the Richland School District, okay? We're paying rent out at Rockbridge for I Thrive. Now, that was the right move because we didn't know if that thing was going to go or not. It's exploding. We've got a waiting list. This thing can expand. It's problematic to transport food, students 12 miles north of town, right? This is something that could be very viable, where I Thrive to move here in at least part of Melville Hall. One of the reasons, we wanted the green space to the north of Melville Hall so that we had the ability to have playground, okay? We're servicing students at Public Library. Our Partner program is doing really, really well. One of the great things that's making Partner work well is that students are getting their individual spaces, or spaces where it's maybe just them and one other person to work in. That's a really, really attractive thing for that program. There aren't, there's only six spaces, office spaces, at Partner at the East Hall Building. This building was set up for faculty offices, all right? So the setup of this particular building is perfect for what we're trying to do with students who are going to Partner, to be able to have an office cubicle, shared space with another student or two, and to be able to expand that process. In addition to, we've got, this is East Hall down here, while there's a woodworking shop in the back of East Hall, there's a mechanical shop in the back of the gym. And so again, our Partner students having access to both woodworking and auto mechanics, and have, continue to be able to provide them with some of their own space. All of those alternative programming is something that we think we could have a great use for Melville. And so that's the reason why we're looking at adding Melville as well, and the green space along with it. So, thank you. What questions does the board have, or board members have?
With the, there's going to be a need for remodeling, to some extent, of Melville Hall. So are we looking at a timeline of the next school year to be able to make the transition for I Thrive and all those components, if they have it open for business, so to speak?
Yep, it's very possible. We flipped the space out at Rockbridge this summer, in a matter of about three months from the end of last school year to the beginning, start of summer this year. A lot of it will depend on when the closing date actually ends up being, but we do have the original facility assessors from Nexus coming on site tomorrow, and they're going to walk through the property with us so that we can determine, get a little bit more of a budget, and then what do we have left from proceeds or savings from referendum, and then what can we get done, and what kind of a timeline does that look like? So, I'm optimistic, I can't say for sure. The nice thing, though, is that I Thrive operates on a trimester basis, so even if we couldn't be ready for the start of the first trimester, say August 10th or whatever that date is, highly likely that it would be ready for the second trimester, and we do still have the rental space out at Rockbridge that we can use for another year.
Would you have a guess at all as far as closing date, looking at one month, two months, three months?
I can only speak on behalf of residential property, and based on my experience with what I do know about construction, whatever you know about residential property doesn't matter when it comes to commercial property. So, we're going to try to get an RFP for surveying, and we'll work with the county for that. I think that that's going to be the biggest piece. Financing is obviously not going to be an issue, right? It's not contingent on financing or anything like that, but there will still need to be title work and those kinds of things done, I anticipate, and I know that that stuff takes time. So, if I had to guess, and I truly am just guessing, I would think within 90 days.
That would be my guess. Thank you.
Anything else for board members? Looking to take action on the county's counter offer and terms.
Is there a motion to approve the counter offer and terms for Richland County for the purchase of property known as Gymnasium and Melville Hall, as well as adjacent field, green spaces, parking lots, as presented, called developing MOU between Simons Recreation Center and the Richland School District? So move? Motion made by Mr. Miller. Is there a second? One second. Mr. Miller, discussion. Mr. Nona?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to move in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851C, E, and F, and 118.125 to consider the resignation of a certified staff employee and related contractual provisions to discuss a contracted matter which, if discussed in public, could have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of those involved, and to deliberate intergovernmental agreements regarding student participation in alternative education programming. Is there a second?
One second.
Mr. Thompson's discussion. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
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 Thank you.